Evening. Uh, welcome all who are listening tonight viewing via Zoom. Um, the reminder, the meeting is being recorded both video and audio. Um, there were microphones around the room that are particularly sensitive, so, um, please remember that if you're around them. Um. We have a public comment section, um, as, as we do every meeting. And, uh, we would ask those who are in the room, um, tonight with us, if you would like to speak, please use the signup sheet. Um, over there, if you are on Zoom and you would like to speak, uh, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your screen. Um, and please, uh, direct your comments, uh, to the board. Uh, if you are connected by phone only, please press star nine, um, if you would like to address the board this evening. Uh, comments are limited to five minutes and again should be directed to the board only. Um, we would ask that you not disclose any confidential information about your account, uh, or anyone else's account that's not in your name. Um, staff can get with you here, but they will not, um, uh, provide individual account information, um, or history during an open meeting for those same concerns. Um, as always, you may email or, or call BPU with any concerns. Uh, the agenda and presentations can be found on the BPU website, or if you're using Zoom, they'll appear on your screen. My name is Rose Mulvaney Henry, member at large, position three, and current board president. Other members of our board and staff include Bill Johnson, general manager, David Haley, member at large, position two, who's joining us remotely this evening. Uh, Tom Groneman, second district and board vice president. Bob Mylan, first district and board secretary. Jeff Bryant, third district, Mary Gonzalez, member at large, position one, and Angela Lawson, deputy chief counsel. Would remind everybody, uh, to put your phones on silent. And before we begin our meeting, if you would please join me and rise and recite, in reciting our pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Constitution, where we should stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever. Angela, can I get roll call, please?
Roll call, Groneman.
Here.
Haley.
Here.
Mylan.
Yeah.
Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
You have a forum.
Thank you. Uh, before I ask, uh, for the approval of tonight's agenda, I'll ask if there are any comments, uh, suggestions, edits, or anything corrections that need to be made. Hearing none?
This is Jeff, move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Mylan.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, before I ask for approval of the minutes of the work session of March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, I'll ask if there are any edits, corrections, et cetera.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Mylan.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Uh, before I ask for the approval of the minutes of the regular session of March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, I will ask if anyone has any comments, corrections, edits.
This is Jeff, move to approve.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Mylan.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Bill?
Thank you. Uh, Chris, I'll look at you first. Is there anybody? Rob, I'm looking at you next. Is there anybody online watching to speak tonight?
Yes, sir. The first number is nine, three, one, zero, and I've enabled his ability to speak now.
Hi, this is Ty Gorman. I live at two, eight, four, three Parkwood Boulevard. And, um, I've, uh, spoken in the past and appreciate the time. I'd like to, uh, you know, continue to represent the folks that I volunteer with in the community, uh, to ask for no unsafe shut offs, uh, of electricity or water for non-payment, uh, especially when there's so much money available, uh, federally in the, if, in the near future, if not now, when they've canceled Lie Heep for the moment. Um, and, uh, to also remove, uh, fixed fees and, uh, and disconnection and reconnection and, uh, other fees that can down low-income customers and, uh, hurt the folks who can't pay the bills much, much more than high-income customers, the commercial customer. And, uh, the third demand from folks, uh, that I work with in the community was to, uh, look at the prices for residential. Um, and to that end, I know there is a, uh, a rate case coming up. Uh, it's been, um, put on the website now, uh, for BPU. Um, with most of the, uh, ways that people can get involved through intervention in the rate case, as well as, um, a public hearing in the middle of June. And, um, I think that there could be more, more deliberate, uh, engagement from staff and, uh, and the board to, uh, reach out into the community and let people know that this rate, uh, requi- rate hike is being requested and to, uh, start to engage, uh, the community for feedback, so it's not such a, um, a, a shock and difficulty for people to come to these meetings and be, be upset, uh, instead of engaging directly on possible solutions during this, uh, next few months until the public hearing on June fourteenth and fifteenth. Um, and I also wanted to address the working session before, uh, this meeting, uh, that, and then, you know, thank you for addressing that. Um, there, there do need to be some changes to, uh, that the board can, um, make happen to stop, uh, charging, uh, low-income customers, uh, so much money and for, uh, for service and for keeping their service going when that is in the difficult few months or they have to disconnect or something like that. Um, I think bringing, bringing low-income customers into the decision-making process and bringing them into the process that, that in a way that they actually engage with staff and work through problems together and then bring those, um, solutions to the board, and then the board brings that to the managers, um, of those programs on behalf of, uh, the, the, the low-income customers would be a great way to, uh, start incorporating that feedback and bring it into the rate case process. And finally, I wanted to address the, uh, Nierman plant shut, um, shutting down, which was discussed in the working session. You know, people, when you, when I walk around and, uh, in, uh, in meetings and hear people talking about BPU, um, I hear a lot about how the staff is paid, um, uh, quite a bit and the, uh, maybe some, some issues people have with, uh, with, with you and the, and the employment and I'd never really, um, uh, I don't think people know how mu- how much more money, uh, Nierman plant wastes every, uh, month than all of the employees. Uh, you know, shutting the coal plant down for this, uh, this extended period and for the low-capacity factor, which means it doesn't run very often. And, uh, that's because this, it's only running to get sold into the Southwest power pool, and it's too expensive to sell its energy to the Southwest power pool. So it's just costing customers tens of millions of dollars, tens of millions of dollars going to waste when Nierman, when the, when, basically whenever gas prices aren't really high. And gas prices aren't likely to come back to these heights in that way because, uh, renew- or, uh, storage, uh, battery storage is projected to drop so much in its costs over the next, uh, few years. So, uh, it just is a bad investment and is, uh, incredibly expensive for customers, uh, much more so than any staff expenditures.
That is time. That is your time.
And thank you.
Rob, is there anybody else?
Is there Ryan McCarron?
Can you give me the name again, please?
Rayon.
Right, Rayon, if you can, uh, state your name and address for the record, please, and you have five minutes.
Yeah, sir. Uh, Ryan McCarron, I'm with Cleaner Now at thirty-seven thirty Metropolitan Avenue. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, I was trying to catch up on last time's meeting before I spoke to you all, but I missed that deadline. So I just wanted to, I've spoken, I think, before to, about the community outreach. So I haven't had a chance to really see what came out of the work session on March fifteen, but, uh, as always, Cleaner Now is always interested on behalf of ourselves and behalf of the community to join in any resulting, uh, outcome from that. So just wanted to put it out there one more time, and I will do my homework better for next time, just to be better prepared and see exactly what you came up with on that March fifteen meeting. Uh, so yeah, thank you for that. And yeah, that's all I had to say today.
Thank you.
Rob. I, can I?
Sure.
Bye. Mr. McCarron, this is Jeff Bryant. I'm, I'm one of the members on that committee, and we will be having another committee meeting the third Wednesday of this month, so you'll hear more updates, you know, about we're building the committee and we're building the, the, uh, basically the groundwork for how we're gonna, how we're gonna work this, and I don't expect it to take hopefully very long. Uh, but we will have an update in the next meeting on the.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you. There are no other answers.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to general manager staff report, so I'll ask Lori to come up and present our February twenty-twenty-three financials.
Evening. Okay. We'll go over, uh, February, uh, preliminary financials, so these are still, uh, preliminary. We're, um, involved in our annual audit at this time. Um, I'm working through that. Uh, we have all of our, um, work done on the audit here within the next two to three weeks. To start off with, looking at, uh, build usage on the electric side, um, all of our, uh, customer groups, residential, commercial, industrial, all up over our twenty-two levels by about three point one percent. Uh, residential was up slightly by one percent. Our commercials up five percent and industrial was up, uh, three percent. So far, we've had a pretty, um, mild two months, uh, beginning this year. On the water side. Um, overall, we're up about two and a half percent with all of our customer classes being above twenty-two levels. Uh, residential up two percent, our commercials up five percent, and our industrial is up slightly about one percent. Our revenues for the month of February, um, in comparison to twenty-twenty-two are up about eight point, uh, two percent. Um, and compared to budget, we're up about six point one percent, which translates to about one point eight million overall. One point seven on the electric side and about seventy thousand on the water side, so electric was up over all about seven percent, while water was up about two percent. Looking at our revenues from a year-to-date perspective, um, we're almost ten percent above, uh, twenty-twenty-two levels. Um, we're seven percent above our budget with four million of that, uh, being, uh, on the electric side and about a hundred and fifty thousand on the water side. So about four point million, four point one million combined. On the electric, uh, we're up overall eight percent. Um, some of the, uh, areas, the customer classes there with the commercial, or sorry, residential up about six hundred and eighty thousand. Our commercials up about two million. Industrial's about four hundred and forty thousand, while our schools are up about four hundred thousand. We do see our wholesale sales below, uh, projected. Um, that is, uh, due to some of our opportunity to sell on the market, uh, due to the lower gas prices. On the water side, we're up about two percent. Um, residential up about seventy thousand, while commercials up about a hundred and fourteen thousand and industrials up about fifty thousand. Looking at our operating expenses for the month of February, um, compared to twenty-twenty-two, we're up about thirteen percent. Um, electrics up overall about two and a half million, while water's up slightly about thirty-seven thousand. We are down in comparison to budget, um, through February, um, by about one point four percent. Um, sixty-five thousand, uh, above budget on the electric side, while about five hundred and thirty thousand on the, on the water side, so which translates, it's up about a percent, one percent on the electric side and down about twelve percent uh, on the water side. We have amortized, this is our second month of amortizing the twenty-twenty-two, third and fourth quarter ERC under recovery. Uh, that's about two point four million, uh, each month that we're amortizing that, so the total overall through the six months when we finish amortizing will be about fourteen point eight million. Looking at year-to-date operating expenses, uh, we're up over twenty-twenty-two levels by seven point seven percent. We're down, uh, in comparison to budget by about three point two percent. Um, overall, we're down almost about nine hundred and forty thou- thousand, uh, on the electric side and five hundred and thirty-five thousand on the water side, which translates to being down about two percent on electric, water's down about eight percent. Our operating expenses, uh, just, uh, taking depreciation out, um, we're six point nine, almost seven percent below twenty-two or above twenty-two levels. Uh, we are four percent below budget, um, down about a million dollars on the, uh, electric side and five hundred and thirty thousand on the water side, about one point six overall. Some of our variances there, uh, our purchase power is up about, uh, five hundred thousand, our fuel is down about three point eight million. Uh, production is also down about one point four, and TND's about nine hundred and sixty thousand down, and GNA's about a hundred and eighty thousand. On the water side, all their, uh, expense categories are down, uh, with production about two hundred and fifty, TND about two hundred thousand, and, uh, GNA's about thirty-six thousand. Our change in net position just for the month, um, we had a positive four point seven million, um, against a budget of about two point eight million. Uh, electric had a positive four point one mon- million, while water was, um, a positive six hundred and thirty thousand. And then our change of position, net position, uh, from a year-to-date perspective, um, we budgeted to be about a positive three point nine million. Uh, so far to date, we're at positive nine million with, uh, seven point eight of that and the electric side and one point two, um, on the water side. This looks at our ten-year trend, um, you know, for our, uh, revenues and the blue bar expenses and the, and non-operating expenses in the red. Um, so for twenty twenty-three, um, you know, about fifty-four point six million revenues there and forty-six point eight million of, uh, operating and non-operating expenses. On the water side, uh, same concept there, our revenue's about eight and a half million, while our operating, non-operating about seven point three million, uh, in twenty-twenty-three. Look at our average daily collections, um, through, uh, for the month of February, we're on average about one point nine million. Um, pretty, uh, similar to our January levels. Um, February's activity here is December and January usage with, uh, being billed in January, and then, uh, we're collecting the, the cash, uh, for February, so that's the cycle that, uh, would represent that dollar amount. And then, uh, this is our historical cash. Um, so for the month of February, we had a slight gain, about six hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, so far, year-to-date, we're down about five point eight million. Um, we do have our KDHE reimbursement still outstanding of about three point three million. Uh, so we're still waiting to receive that. And then our cash position, so for February, we're at fifty-nine days. Uh, we were at sixty days in, in January, so um, our average, uh, day is still around seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand, uh, as we're still experiencing those, uh, the, the twelve-month rolling, uh, of our high, um, fuel and purchase power costs in the last year. And then this is just our historical, uh, graph, uh, where we are on our day's cash on hand. And then, uh, this is, uh, the graph that the red represents, um, our day's cash on hand, and the green represents our change in our cash and kind of an anomaly in this month where, uh, we did drop, um, in our day's cash, but our change of cash did go up. Um, and that's the impact of the rolling twelve-month expenses, um, is what impacts that, uh, that change there. Some of the balance sheet notables, uh, we, our fuel, um, inventory, um, we have about eight point one million, uh, of, of fuel, uh, inventory. Uh, we currently, as of today, or yesterday, I believe, uh, we have about sixty-one days of coal on hand. Uh, we still have our two bond, uh, construction fund bond dollars still outstanding for our twenty-sixteen C and our twenty-twenty-A. So we're still waiting on, on transformers, uh, to come in. And then our capital spending. Um, for the, through February, we spent about four point three million in capital, uh, two point two on the electric side and one point five on the water, about a half million, uh, in our common areas. Um, we have a, a budget of about sixty-one million dollars, sixty-one point one million, so we have about ninety-three percent remaining. And there's a few of the projects that, um, are being worked on. Uh, one of the bigger projects there is, uh, that Argentine, uh, tank replacement, so that's where we're, um, putting a lot of work in that and getting our reimbursement back from KDHE. And then the last slide is our debt coverage, so, uh, we're at, with our debt coverage with pilot, we're at a combined two point nine oh. We have two point eight o- eight one on the electric side and two point two on the water side. Um, with our coverage without pilot is a combined two point one eight, uh, with two point oh nine times on electric and one point seven four on the water side. Uh, one other thing I want to, um, bring up is, so we've started our second quarter ERC rate. Um, and it, we did remain the, the same rate as was the first quarter, which is about four point six nine nine cents. Um, one of the things that has helped us, if, if you recall, we had about, uh, an eight point four million dollar under recovery, uh, that we were trying to collect in this, in the first quarter ERC. Um, with, you know, gas prices being down and everything, it has helped us recoup some of that under recovery. So we project that through, through March, we're still finalized in March, that, um, we'll be able to collect about half of that. So there'll still be about four million, a little, little, um, more than four million that will be in under recovery, that will be recovered in the third quarter of, uh, twenty-three. The second quarter has a six point three million dollar under recovery in it. So our hope is hopefully we can get close to half of that, if not more, um, during the second quarter, and that would still create an under recovery for the fourth quarter, but, uh, at least, you know, we're kind of making some progress on that under recovery. So. With that, is there any questions?
Um, I have a couple of things, so, uh, first, and you guys have probably told me this a hundred times, uh, have we paused the coal shipments during the Nierman outage? Okay. So, so two trains have been paused. That's, that's, that's something. Thank you very much. Uh, the other one is, so just looking at our day's cash on hand and, and how we're doing, you know, looking at our expenses, you know, our, our outgoing. My assumption, looking at that from this angle, is that we've curtailed as much maintenance as we can, but keeping, you know, what we can and what, what is mandatory. So, you know, I know that there's, there's going to be a rate study and, and rate, uh, hearing come in front of us, and, and I'm wondering if, if we have fallen behind on any of our regular, you know, I'm, in my mind, I'm, I'm picturing there's so many miles of, of line and so many miles of, of water lines in our city that when you break it down into whatever their length of usage is, forty years, are we replacing one fortieth of it every year, knowing that you don't want to wait, push it down the line, all of a sudden you got five years worth of it that needs to be replaced in one year to catch back up. I'm, I'm just, you know, and this doesn't have to be for this meeting, this can be a presentation in the future, is, are we deferring any of the maintenance that we should be doing? And if so, if things come back, you know, where we want them with, between either the rate increase or, you know, prices dropping or whatever, whatever the reasons, how much reality time-wise will it take us to catch back up for, because you still have to do your estimated annual amount of maintenance, and now you have to add any lag to that, so, I mean, theoretically, there's got to be a limitation on our manpower that we can do. So, I mean, that, that could be a, for a presentation, but I think that that would be another thing to kind of understand, uh, if possible, before the rate hearing, so.
So, short answer is, yeah, we're not where we would like to be. We not, we're not where we should be. Uh, we will put together some conversation about, uh, where we are, with taking care of all of our assets and, and what else to get between where we should be and, uh, and where we are, and where we, where we would like to get to.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Next on the agenda, I try to get, uh, Scott up here at least once a year, uh, Darren, if you can come up. Uh, but this is an update on our vegetation management plan. Jeremy, I don't know if you want to say anything or not, but, uh,
One thing I would say, I don't, still there, thunder, but, um,
Microphone.
You know, I think, I think we've asked the board for, um, support in our revamped vegetation management program, and I think you needn't look no further than the winds that blew Friday and Saturday. Saturday morning at four-thirty, I got up to go to the rodeo grounds, we had thirteen customers off, that was it. I mean, that's pretty amazing when we had those winds that we had Friday and Saturday, and I did some little digging, we had a gust as high as seventy-eight miles an hour Friday, so that's a real testament to the program that Scott's managing, how he's allocating the crews and how we're holding ourselves to our own standards, so that, I thought that was pretty amazing.
Yeah, thank, thank you. Thank you for that.
Um, all I want to say to start off with is just kind of introduce Scott. I mean, I think you, you all pretty well know him. If you don't, he's the superintendent of our vegetation management program, so, you know, he handles this program in the entirety pretty well. Um, so he's going to just kind of walk you through the program and what it's about, and then at the end, I've got a few slides to kind of put some numbers on what Jeremy's talking about, about the improvement we've, uh, seen in reliability, thanks to the program, so I'll let Scott start off.
Uh, thanks for having me. I, obviously, my voice is pretty loud, I probably don't need a mic at all. Bill, Bill probably notices that more than anybody, but anyway, I've been, you know, I've just, a little about myself, if you haven't heard about me before, I usually, every couple of years I'm here, so I've been here for almost six years now. We made some dramatic changes, but my point is, no matter what ideas I come up with, if you guys don't back me and don't help me, then it's just, I'm just running down the road without anything, so Jeremy says we do a good job, and Darren says we do a good job, and we really have some great numbers coming up here to show you. I mean, it's, it's been phenomenal, but if I didn't have these guys helping me, it's not, it's not me. I mean, it's, it's been phenomenal, but if I didn't have these guys helping me, it's not, it's not me. I just bring the ideas and I try to make them to go through, so Bill's always supported us. This is my fourth electric utility and this is the best utility that I've had for cooperation by people letting me run it the way it needs to be ran. And I think you'll see after six years, we got some really good accomplishments, so here we go. Talked about this before, so many slides and we've talked, I've given to you before, but estimated we have six point six million trees. In Wyandotte County, and that's only trees that if you're counting, they're over six inches, sixty eight inches DBH was diameter breast height. So that's not counting all that shrub and all the stuff you see underneath the lines or growing anywhere else, not even counting those. And this was a number that we got about three years ago. So when we take it and you divide it up the way I divide it up and most people do is you have sixty five thousand customers, it's about a hundred trees per customer and the US average is twelve. I mean, that's, that's a lot of work, a lot of work to try to take care of that, but. Biggest accomplishment we have right here, and I know people like to see competitive edges and what we can do. We've moved from a five year cycle, the last time I was up here, we were at seven to six to five. And now with a hundred and fifteen feeders, we're on a three year cycle. If you don't know anything about trees, you don't know anything about power lines, that number is the best number you can have, three years. There's less than five percent utilities across the country, small, big, public power municipalities, federal, that have a three year program. I couldn't tell you the friends that I have in the business, nobody I know has a three year cycle, nobody. So that's a heck of a deal. I mean, that's why we're getting thirteen outages on a night with seventy five mile an hour winds, that's why. We have a three point three million annual budget, it sounds like a lot of money, but when you take. Six and a half million trees and try to do your best on every three years, it's, it's a chunk. We have two current contractors on site, we have Asplin Tree Expert. It says Asplin Tree Company, I showed this to my son and I got him a job at Asplin and he's like, Dad, it's not Asplin Tree Company, it's Asplin Tree Expert. And I'm like, okay, Hunter boy. I'll make sure I change that. And then we have Right Tree Service, they're two big major companies. But to get the bang for our buck and to get the number of contractors that we need, the guys that are qualified to work around power lines. You got to bring the big boys in. And when we bring them in, their cost is actually cheaper, considerably cheaper than anybody else around town would do on a. Regular cycle basis, so. We're clearing what we're trying to accomplish, we're clearing ten feet on primary distribution lines and up to twenty three feet on transmission lines. We clear that ten feet because you have, it's a circumference around the line, it's just not anything, it's under the line or beside the line, it's a circumference because we have overhang. We have everything else, if you don't get ten feet, then we can't maintain three years. So a lot of times, you know, people come up to me and said, well, why can't you just take five feet? I said, because we, we don't have the ability to come back in your yard every two years. We can't come back and I'll show you some growth rates on trees after this, that will give you an explanation. We try to remove like in the winter time is our, if I had my brothers, we'd only have tree crews in the winter time. Because right now, and probably, I think Rose, you said we were in over your house clearing trees already or in your neighborhood clearing trees?
Oh, I mean, I see, I see them all over, but.
Not yet, anyway.
Not yet.
Not yet. But we clear those, we, people don't like trees in the winter time, they're tired of the autumn and the fall, trees are kind of ugly, you know, it's the best time for us to do our work. So right now, over the winter months, we're clearing ninety percent of our efforts on the sixty nine and one sixty one lines. We're trying to get those big trees that are can fall into that. Because as you know, if you don't clear for the one sixty one lines and sixty nine, there's no sense in clearing any distribution lines. Because the, the power is coming from those guys to get to the twelve KV. It's just, so we put all our effort in the winter time to clear in that. Some lines, like one of the lines we did this year, we've cleared over two hundred and fifteen large trees on that line, just to get them away. So we can make sure we have reliable power. One of the main objectives when we started this was to reduce vegetation related outages by fifty percent a year. Darren's going to show you how we got up to that number. We try to provide excellent customer service by contacting customers within twenty four hours of their requests. That's a given. If you ask any of the guys at workforce, any of the planners at workforce for Asplin Right Tree Service is twenty four hours or go home. Basically, that's it, I mean, these people need to know that the trees are in the yard, that something's going to happen, what's going to happen in the yard? So if you ever been contacted before, if we're going to do a new feeder for the year. Or for the next month or whatever, we have phone calls to go out, to call everybody, and we also put door hangers on the door, it's a pink door hanger. We put on the front door so people will know we're going to be in the neighborhood, we don't want these people not knowing what we do and we don't want them to be surprised. So we try to educate our customers on what we're trying to accomplish at the same time. These are some of just a few, eight of the different tree species and the growth rates. I mentioned earlier how we try to clear ten feet, so if you look at an ash. The main branch of the main ash tree grows up, will go about eighteen inches per year. Sucker growth is when we trim off some small branches, like we trim off maybe an eight or ten inch branch, that's the main branch coming off. When we cut those off, if we don't cut it back to where we should, the sucker growth can be five feet in a year. It's tremendous. So we're only clearing ten feet. So if we're not making, if we're not taking some of those big leads off of some of them, there's no point in us going in and clearing. If we're going to be two years, we're going to be right back at where we started. So that's why some of these people ask, man, you really just took the whole side of that tree on me? I'm like, I kind of had to, because if I have to come back again, it's just costing us double and triple the money. And I can't guarantee that your lights are going to stay on in the summertime or the wintertime. So you'll see all these different ones, Elms, sixty inches, Hackberry, Locust, Locust is bad because, I mean, I come from Arizona and I thought everything had a big sticker on it in Arizona. We got nothing compared to these locusts, I mean, they're like, they go through a man's foot and through his boot at the same time, they're nasty. But look at Black Walnut, they're a real slow growing tree, they'll grow forty inches per year, but they'll grow seventy inches over the year. And that's all that tree is, the mechanism on these trees is when you cut a branch off, they're trying to maintain themselves and grow. So when they have this sucker growth coming out, this is this trees, the tree is trying to survive, to try to say, hey, you cut this limb off. That was supplying me with sugar for the tree and now I need to put all my energy into pushing that foliage back out again. So the trees are trying to maintain what they have. So that's kind of what the species and the growth rates are, that's why I kind of bring this up, it's pretty important. Our trimming specification fifteen KV distribution is ten feet, sixty nine is twenty feet and one sixty one is twenty two feet. Basically, it's a customer's responsibility beyond these clearances, when we come in. We try to clear the ten feet on distribution and the, and the other lineages or the, the foot distance on the transmission. And here's another really cool thing about Wyandotte County. When I came here, I asked, I said, do we have a standard for the city on the code, how many feet we can have? And the guy says, no, what do you have? And I said, well, we'd like to do ten feet on distribution and twenty feet on transmission and twenty two feet on one sixty one, the guy goes, send it to me, it's in. Now, believe me, ladies and gentlemen, I've been to four, this is my fourth utility. I've never ever had, that was five minutes. I've worked for five weeks and five months on some of these communities before. And given multiple explanations and multiple diagrams to say why we had to have what we had to have to make sure your lights are on, five minutes. That's all it took, pretty slick. Here's some of the damage when we have people, a lot of times during storms, now this is. You see these examples of what these trees can do. So a lot of time when we're talking to customers, we're also talking to them about the trees that can damage our houses, it may not even be on their power line. It may not even be close to anything else, but we try to inform our customers to say, hey, by the way, we're going to take ten feet off this tree. But the other tree you have in your backyard is not near a power line, but it's split down the middle or it's hollow or it's nasty or it's rotten and it's dying and dead. You need to take a look at that tree, you need to have somebody come in, another service come in and take a look at it. Here's what happens a lot of times when you don't. Just more storms coming in and just hammering, I mean, look at this across this guy's driveway. That was a big old rotten tree and it just, a good burst of energy came through and hit it the right way and toppled it right over. This guy wasn't too happy and woke up in the morning, I mean, this is a tree in his front yard. And again, this wasn't even near our, it was near, I think it had a secondary or a triplex line running close to it, but it didn't do much damage to us, but look what it did to his vehicle. Same this, this is over in, was it Stony Point, right? Stony Point, this one happened over here with some of these trees, and if you were here for that time, that was an extraordinary storm that did an extraordinary amount of damage. Just ripped the top of these trees right off. Same with, this is Stony Point as well, you see the tree in the background by our pole back there, just ripped it in half and threw it in a direction, but you can't even. I mean, it's hard to predict, you can't tell where it's going to go. Here's what some of these trees look like before with our lines, I have a few of these before and after, and here's what it looks like afterwards. So you'll see the stumps in the front, we completely eliminated that problem for the customer and as well, more, we eliminated it for ourselves. Same thing, this is right down by our office on Kansas Avenue and look at, I mean, it's hard to see where the lines are some of the times. And then you look down, I mean, now it's cleared, this is what you want to see. I know people like trees here, but most of the time I try to tell them, I'm sure you like your air conditioning on in the summertime and you like your heat on in the wintertime and. You can't have both most of the time. Same thing with this one, here's all this sucker growth, you'll see those big branches coming up and we, somebody trimmed it a while ago. All those sucker branches are on the top of that, they're just shooting out there, can't wait to get a hold of something. Here's what happens when we took, when we got rid of them. Same thing in this one, this guy's front yard. He didn't like it very much, but he told me he didn't have sap dripping on his motorhome anymore, I'm like, well, that's, that's a good thing. There's the same thing on this one, I mean, try to, you see the wires up on top, it's hard to, it's hard to see them, not anymore though. There's our local environment, I've tried to throw this, you guys have lived here considerably longer than I have, but. The ten year average of thirty four inches per year, growth rates of trees in this area in the growing seasons are phenomenal. People ask me, he goes, how, how do I plant a tree and where do I plant it? I said, I'm pretty sure you just have to dig a hole and put it in the ground here. That's, that's about it, there's not a hole, where I come from, I mean, you're putting in soil amendments and you're doing chemistry in the soil. To see if this tree with this factor can live with the salt ratio in the soil, we got none of that here, just dig a hole and put it in the ground. Number of species, again, I talked about some of these different trees and then disturbance growth rates and trimming disturbance and then removals is what we're looking at. That's kind of the stuff that goes into our project plan. Darren gets the numbers. Thank you for having me, I appreciate it.
Thank you. So Scott got to tell you about all the hard, hard work that he does and I'm just going to come up here and take credit with some of these numbers. So if you look, this is our outages by cause in twenty seventeen, you can kind of see there along the, along the bottom on our main, main causes. We try to track this information. Excuse me, you know, to kind of look at what problems we're having, obviously trees are number one concern in twenty twenty, twenty seventeen. Over eleven hundred outages by trees, if you go to twenty twenty two, I mean, you know, right there, just looking at that, that drop in trees from eleven hundred down to two hundred and sixty one. You know, just a huge decrease. And, and quite honestly, another thing we've cleaned up over the years is kind of how we're coding these outages, making sure getting to the root cause. You can see, you know, weather's down too, which has to do with just amount of storms we get, but. Think part of what used to happen is, you know, if, if a tree was blown down during a storm, they'd say, ah, well, it's the storm and they code as the storm outage. But really, it's, the tree had never been properly trimmed, so it was really the tree was the root cause. So you kind of see that decrease in, in both of them, you know, because of that and because we did a better job of actually tracking the root cause of these outages. So again, eight hundred and sixty one less outages due to the vegetation management program, that's a little bit over seventy six percent reduction. And just the number of outages caused by trees, which is, which is really impressive in my opinion. So obviously, we still had two hundred and sixty one outages, you know, due to trees or vegetation in in twenty twenty two. Falcon with Scott, you know, approximately seventy five percent of those outages were on secondary wire. Which is, you know, we're not currently maintaining that, the vegetation management program, we're clearing just primary only. So, you know, we, we have the customer secondary wire, which as Scott mentioned, goes to the customer for responsibility to trim your, your service going to your house, that's on the customer. We also do have some secondary wire on our system, that's not being trimmed, that is, you know, BP's responsibility. So we're trying to roll that into the next trim cycle that Scott's working on, this year will be starting a brand new cycle next year. So hopefully, we'll be able to get our secondary wire in there and get those outages down, you know, even further moving forward. So that was just looking at, at number of outages. There's different ways to look at outages, a couple of the, you know, typical standard industry metrics are SAD and SAFI. So SAFI is our system average interruption frequency index, and that basically just tells you how often the average customer is going to experience outage. You know, how many number of outages for the average customer. And then the SAD is the interruption duration index, which is just how long is that out is going to be for the average customer? So those are kind of two industry standards, so if we look at our, our vegetation outages in terms of those metrics. You know, so as we saw in twenty seventeen and for most utilities, trees and vegetation is typically the number one cause of outages. So looking in terms of the SAD SAFI, we're measuring, you know, the length and the, the duration in, in minutes or hours or whatever it may be. Usually vegetation is about twenty percent of, of all outages for a utility, twenty percent or above. For BPU, it's an average of about eight percent of the past four year, four years. So definitely, you know, much better than a typical utility and typical average. So that's about a sixty three percent in terms of SAD caused by trees and vegetation. So that's, you know, a different way of, of looking at kind of same information. And then just a couple of our benefits, you know, outside of reliability. So, you know, you know, Scott kind of shows some pictures of the damage that they can cause, you know, when he's going through, just looking at, at dead trees and trees need to be removed. But also just trees, you know, in contact with power lines can be just a safety hazard, they can cause fires, you know, there can be, be risks to the public there, so need to get that cleared out. Obviously, so less outages, a better reliability, but we're also talking about cost savings. We're talking about, you know, less crews coming in on outages to put wire back up, it's been taken down by a tree. So, you know, we're getting, you know, annual cost savings in terms of, you know, overtime and, and resources we're allocating to just putting lights back on after a storm. And also just less, less overall cleanup of limbs and debris and things like that. And then one thing not mentioned that, you know, I think Scott's pictures did really well, a really good job of illustrating. As you saw the kind of before and after some of those lines, so having the lines clear like that also makes it easier for our guys. If there is an outage and they're riding those lines out, it's easier to see what's going on faster, get the lights back on. You know, when there is a problem, because you can see what's happening, you'll have a bunch of trees, you know, obscuring the line and possibly hiding problems. So that's pretty much, much my piece, is there any questions that Scott, Scott or I can answer?
Darren, I don't think I have any questions. You know, but this, this is something I think a lot of folks don't really think about very often, right? I mean, just an average consumer, I know I wouldn't if I didn't. You know, if I hadn't seen your presentation before, I didn't understand how important this was to lessening the outage, the impact to our customers. And you guys just do such a great job with it and I just wanted to thank you for the presentation tonight and actually the really good job you guys are doing. You, I'm really looking at Scott, you know that.
Well, I'm, I'm taking the credit.
I understood, no, but seriously, thank you very much.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I know, I remember the next competition, people ask me, what is independence power line, what's every D, the big bad monster on the back end? They're on a seven year cycle. Seven. Seven, we're on three. They're not even close, though. Not even close, their average one, it was twenty percent, I talked to a guy today, they're on twenty nine percent. He goes, what do you guys, it's at four and eight, and he goes, well, that's not true, I'm like, I believe what you want. Believe what you want, well, it's easier because you're smaller, I said, no, it's not. Because we're small, and so we're actually bigger than you now. I like a little competition.
We're passing.
I'm sorry, ma'am, we have a public comment section that's at the beginning of the meeting. And so, I mean, we'll be happy to take your question after the meeting if, if that's helpful.
Yeah, yeah, I guess kind of like you said, it's, you know, normally number one cause of outages and, and for us, it's, it's not, so.
All right, thank you. Ma'am, we'll, we'll make sure we contact you after the meeting, take your question, okay? So one thing I like, would like to do is go back in time a little bit, Scott was very generous in some of his comments. And I'll give you some of our thoughts, so we hired Scott, he came here from Arizona. And first thought was. What are we getting from a guy from Arizona where there's hardly any trees and we're coming in here to clean up all of this mess that we have here in, in Wyandotte County? In terms of trying to get our program in better shape. So Scott has proved himself over and over and over and over, and I think, I think the board has seen that throughout the years he's been here. So first of all, kudos to you, thank you for all, and when he came in. We were in much worse shape than what he actually spoke about earlier tonight. Without cut, without counting the secondary circuits, I think we were somewhere around eleven or twelve year trim cycle. So we've seen tremendous progress over the, over the six years that you've been here, we're down to a three year trim cycle now, so. I would be interested in seeing where you guys go with the secondary, because that, you know, the. Uh, I would be interested in seeing where you guys go with the secondary, uh, because that, you know, the eleven, twelve years back the end is not count the secondary either. And also to be good that we're circling back. But we, we brought Scott in and he's made tremendous programs. We had to go back and really revamp the entire program. You know, we're doing circuit trimming from the substation all the way out to the end of every customer. Back in those days, we were doing partial trims out. We weren't even covering the entire circle, circuit. So that was one, uh, one change in addition to getting multiple crews and making it competitive with our contractors to be able to get the best price, bidding the services and doing all the things like that. The other thing I'd like to do is bring, uh, just thank Jeremy for, uh, all of his work back in those days and all the way through today because Scott did run into some issues sometime back, okay? Like, and I kind of reorganized things and got Jeremy more involved back in those days and the program is kind of taking off and and it's kind of built its way up to where it is today. Bringing Darren into this conversation and, you know, and we brought Darren in. He was here at the utility for a while. He left our utility, was much, was eager to come back. And we were very fortunate to have him back and, uh, and he's done nothing but deliver a good service to BPU and to our entire community. So just wanted to pass along those, uh, those thanks to both, both of those gentlemen and also to Jeremy. So a little bit of background information on kind of how far we've come in a short period of time. Next thing I'll do is go ahead and move into, uh, miscellaneous comments. So you got some handouts, a couple of, couple of things in your package, uh, a, uh, KMU meeting that's coming up for anybody that's interested, like, like Chris know. And then also there's a why not economic development meeting coming up. If you're interested in that, let us, let us know if you want to, want to attend that as well. I think Senator Marshall, I believe is going to be there. So for those of you that's interested, let us, let us know. We'd like to have Jeremy come up if you would please. So those of you that, uh, came out to the rodeo grounds, uh, you know, we did, uh, just got to hosting the American Public Power Rodeo, uh, I will stop my conversation and now give, turn it over to Jeremy and ask him to give us an update.
Well, the update is we fought through about a month's worth of rain to build the place and, uh, and then the rain dried up and we got all those winds on Friday and Saturday. So uh, it was a real challenge, but, uh, Darren's team out at, at electric operations, um, in particular Mike Ferguson and Jeremiah Waldeck did a fantastic job. So um, we got a lot of compliments. Um, as you all may be aware, APPA is under a little bit of restructuring right now. And this is one of the programs that got dropped with a completely new team. So literally everybody on the APPA team was, this was the first time they were pulling off an event like this. With the exception of, of one person, Jacomo Ray, and he did a, he did a good job of helping those folks along, but, uh, the event went off, um, with a few hiccups, but all in all, overall success. One of the things that we kind of harped on APPA about was how do we have all of the event and as much as we can in Kansas City, Kansas? And how do we realize that uh, economic benefit to our community, um, versus having some large event, you know, at, at, at the metropolitan downtown area or whatever. And, and one thing we did struggle with is where we could have the banquet had to be moved down there, but, um, we did have time Friday evening for sort of a family fun event. First time that was done, um, had a couple hours where everybody got together on the rodeo grounds and the families were there and the vendors were there and um, everybody was enjoying some food and drink. In the middle of that event, the wind did blow a pole down. Uh, we got lucky it didn't hit anybody. I think Bill was there when that happened, so um, we quickly got to work and got that safeguarded and put back up and, um, then of course Saturday morning it was twenty something degrees, thirty something degrees. I don't know what it was and the wind was still blowing. So um, throughout the day, the whole event went well. Had one person, I'm not sure where he was from, did take a fall and had to withdraw himself from the competition. Uh, did, did end up go and seek some medical help, but, uh, it, it was just because his company wanted him to get tricked out. He, he didn't, he didn't have any lingering problems. So and with that, we, we moved on downtown that evening to the banquet and, uh, that went well. Uh, and just, I mean, I think overall it was just a great event. A lot of a lot of coordination, a lot of work went into it. So really proud of the team and, and how they pulled together with, we've had some significant challenges over the past six or seven months. And it all came together and went off real nicely. So I know the, the APPA presented BPU with this plaque and we'll have David get it, uh, and put it into the, uh, the trophy case, but, uh, it was a really great event. We got a lot of compliments. We're going to help. I'm going to help as I have in the past on the committee. Next year's event will be in Lafayette, Louisiana. Uh, we're going to head down there in September for a planning meeting. I'm going to petition, uh, uh, Bill and see if I can't take a couple of the guys that worked real hard out there and let them share their experience with the team down there and make sure that they try to avoid any pitfalls we had and and talk about some of the things that worked well as well.
What was the total participants?
We had forty seven three man journeyman teams and a hundred and six apprentices.
So in all, that's about three hundred or so, thereabout.
Yeah, about a little over three hundred people. Um, I think there was, there was a little over a thousand people at the banquet. Time you add in some of the vendors, uh, participants, families and other people from the organizations that they represented. APPA team, that kind of thing. So it was a little low. We heard from a couple of people that they didn't want to go to Kansas City twice in a year. Um, they'll come to the big event in, in October. Um, it's a little disheartening to hear that from a public power utility when this is the public power rodeo, but nevertheless, we, we carried on without them. Um, and then we had one or two companies that, uh, unfortunately were in the middle of a labor dispute and, um, they, their teams weren't able to come. But that was it.
A lot of thanks goes to Jeremy, uh, and the whole electric operations, uh, Mike Ferguson, the whole electric operations team out there. They did put in a lot of work and, uh, and, uh, so Saturday when I went out Friday, went out Saturday, went out Saturday, about Thursday, Friday and Saturday and, uh, Saturday I spent a lot of time walking around, meeting, uh, some of the other, uh, crews that were there from other utilities and, uh, just kind of spending some of my time doing that. And, uh, got nothing but compliments on how well the grounds was. Uh, I mean, everybody complained about the weather, of course. But other than that, uh, you know, it was, it was as well as we could have ever planned it under the conditions that they were competing under. But, uh, so kudos goes to them. I do want to also, uh, recognize Dave Melhoff's efforts. So we were supposed to have done this three years ago and, uh, and then we had to cancel at the last minute because of COVID. But when I was, uh, not GM, uh, we'd reached out to APPA and, uh, David made some, uh, had some conversations and brought the topic back to Don Gray and, and me at that time and said, hey, are you guys interested in, in, uh, in hosting this? And of course, at the time I said, yeah, and, and the whole, I think Jeremy's crews were all, all interested in it as well. So so that's kind of where we started back then. I mean, you know, we would have had this three years ago, but, uh, we're fortunate that it came back around in twenty twenty three, three years later and we were able to host it. I wish we'd had Sunday's weather out there Saturday and, but you know, you know, these guys are all used to working in all the different elements anyway. So it was, I think, part of their families and stuff like that that are not used to being out in the winds that were probably a little bit more, uh, bothered by the weather, but all in all, Jeremy, thank you.
Well, we've got a great picture I'm going to pass along. Um, I'm not sure who took it. I would imagine David's photographer. But it's a picture of the family fun time, um, looking up the hill to the north. And there's some teams there pitching cornhole. They were just having fun. And in the background, you can see our guys working to put the pole back. So I'm going to get that framed and we're going to hang it somewhere out the service center is just the commemoration of one more of our challenges, but all in all, it was great and, and we appreciate your support for it.
Thank you, thank you. The only other thing I have is I sent an email out, uh, I think Rose said it's got a conflict with next award meeting. So if you
Yeah, about that. I mean, if, if everyone hasn't already rearranged everything for the eighteenth, I can go ahead and keep it on the nineteenth, which would be its regular day if, if everyone is okay with that. If you change things around, then we'll go the eighteenth.
Yeah, mine is that I
On the eighteenth?
On the eighteenth, yeah.
The, the nineteenth is fine.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, okay. So
Regular, regular time.
I didn't know if it would come up on the board comments. I just wanted to make sure I got it.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Alright, so that's all the comments I have. Thank you for, uh, allowing us to present tonight.
Sure, uh, go to board comments, Mr. Gruneman.
I'd just like to, uh, thank everybody that presented. I, it's, the, the tree program is wonderful. It's great. I've noticed in our neighborhood that, that we haven't had nearly the, the outages and, and blackouts and just even flickers that we used to have. As far as the weather for this last weekend, I, uh, went to Colorado Springs for the APPA lineman's rodeo before we were going to host it the first time. And got up on Saturday morning, the morning of the rodeo and there was two inches of snow. And it was windy and snowy. So, uh, you know, they can't complain too much about just a, a little, little wind. Because they had, but Garden of the Gods is where the rodeo was at, uh, in Colorado and it was beautiful even with the snow. So, uh, I went out on Saturday for a while. It was cold. It was windy. But it was, uh, it was in, it was nice to see everybody there and enjoying themselves and having a good time. So, uh, that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Mr. Haley?
Can you, can you hear me?
We can with some feedback.
Okay, okay. Let me, uh, maybe send this back. I don't know which one. I don't know exactly what to do. Is that better?
Yeah, no, no, it's, it's still reverberating pretty, pretty badly. David, we'll come back to you. Mr. Mylan?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the staff for a presentation that's even very informative. The other request I have is for my tenants for the APPA conference in June in Sella, Washington. So I'm asking the board to approve that. So we'll have a chance to make the proper commendations in advance.
This is Jeff. I move to approve. Grabble.
This is Mary. I second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, Gruneman. Haley? I'll come back. Mylan?
Hi.
Malvany Henry?
Hi.
Bryant?
Hi.
Gonzalez?
Hi.
Haley? Okay.
He's on there twice. He was.
He had two connections and one of the two have dropped. There, he's unmuted now. Go ahead, Mr. Haley.
Haley?
David? We are unable to hear you if you're trying to speak.
That motion carries with, um, five votes.
Thank you. Was that all, Mr. Mylan?
Yes, thanks very much.
Okay. David, are you still with us? Did you want to make your comments? We'll circle back to you. Uh, my comments this evening, you know, spent some time out there on Saturday at the rodeo as well. And, um, you know, watched, watched some of these teams compete. And we're talking about the elements and things like that. And, you know, one thing, uh, I said to, to one of our guys out there was, you know, it, it amazes me, the winds, you know, although they died down on Saturday, they didn't die down a whole lot. But, um, knowing that our line workers work in these elements all the time and have an extremely dangerous job. Um, it, it always brings it back to me that, uh, you know, these, these folks are out there risking their lives every day to keep the, to the power on here in Kansas City, Kansas. And, um, it was a really great way to showcase, um, the rodeo was a really great way to showcase, um, not just our line workers, but the line workers from all the other munis and and, uh, it was, it was a great event. It was very well done. So, uh, congratulations, uh, David and Jeremy for and, and everyone else I'm sure who had a hand in it, Mike and everyone else who had a hand in it. But, uh, it was, it was a really good event. So thank you. And that, that's all I have this evening. Mr. Bryant?
So, uh, as far as the vegetation, so you know, uh, the presentation's a little bit different than it was when you first started giving them. Uh, I remember that one of the things that, uh, when I was my first term, excuse me, my first term was, uh, a lot of phone calls about outages. It used to be the saying that I would hear both at my job and from others is that anytime the wind blows, your power goes out in Wyandotte County. It was like that, you know, it's part of why I originally ran for, for this. And I would say that it's an impressive turnaround, uh, that we've seen in outages. You know, the emails, you know, now, now our residents, uh, were always, you know, calling when we first started and there was so much about, I don't know how many times went out to a site to see, you know, somebody tell me, you know, look how much of my tree that they cut off and, and and it was numerous the first couple of years. I'd say probably the first cycle. Uh, a lot of people, you know, that were, that were not understanding the value of this, but I think now certainly for me, I don't have those phone calls anymore. Uh, very rarely and the, besides, we're still having problems with animal issues, uh, which is a little bit harder to prevent birds from landing on, on lines, but uh, I don't get those phone calls about, you know, problems with outages because we had a wind event anymore. It's, it's so nice to see it, you know, and I would say that, you know, your description of how to plant a tree in Kansas City, you don't have to plant a tree in Kansas City. Just wait and one will grow in your yard. So anyway, thank you guys for all the presentations tonight and all the hard work you did and and for everybody who turned out and, and volunteered at the, uh, the rodeo. It's nice to see everybody out there. So, thanks.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Um, I, I also want to, um, thank you for the vegetation, um, presentation. Um, I still get calls, Jeff, in my neighborhood. The minute my, if we ever have a power outage, they call me and want to know how long it's going to be out and why did it go out? And when am I going to get it fixed? So, but it doesn't happen very often. So that's the good part. Um, and also kudos tonight to the, all the people that worked on the rodeo. When you're out on the grounds, um, you know, it's a lot of people, but you don't really realize. And so this year I was lucky enough to get to go to the banquet and when you put a thousand people in that room, you realize how, how large it was and good luck if we're going to Lafayette because they won a lot of trophies on Saturday, it seemed like. So we'll have to really get our people ready to compete. Um, so Jeremy, thanks for everything you did for that and, um, Mike Ferguson, thanks for that as well. Um, Glenn, thank you for your presentation. I don't know what to expect for this spring outage, hopefully, um, it'll go as smoothly as your presentation did. And Janetta, thanks for filling us in with the community, uh, group that you met with for that. And, um, that's all I have.
Mr. Haley? Are you able to join us with your comments?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I did have two on, and thank you very much because I could hear.
David, we've lost your audio again. It did appear as though you were connected twice as well. And one of the connections is now disconnected. Rob, is there any? Nothing. Okay. Hey, David, in the interest of time, we're going to go ahead and unfortunately skip your comments tonight due to technical difficulties. We, I see you back. Are you there?
I'm trying. Can you hear me?
Can you mute the other connection you have instead of disconnecting it? I think that's what the issue is.
I didn't realize it's on. Anyway, I'll be brief. Thank you for Safi and Sadie that helped me so much to understand what we're doing. And also the rate hearing opportunities that they could still be printed on the bill. I'd appreciate it. So that when we have the rate increase. And I really did enjoy hearing what we did with the rodeo. And also the reduction in trees are the incursions between those. So I'll just abbreviate my comments and look forward to the next meeting. I hope you can hear me.
Thank you, David. Angela, I think we've got a, that concludes the board comments. We've got a motion to go into executive session.
The proposed motion for adoption is as follows. I move that after taking a five minute break, the board go into executive session for thirty minutes to discuss confidential matters related to employment of the general manager. A personal matter of non-elected personnel is justified under the exception in the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The, the general manager, William Johnson, and deputy chief counsel, Angela Lawson, be present to participate in the discussion. All others to be dismissed from the room and electronic and telephonic transmissions to cease, and that we reconvene in open session.
Seven forty-seven.
Returning to both electronic and telephonic broadcasting at seven forty-seven to either take action in an open session or to adjourn.
This is Jeff. So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Groneman?
Aye.
Haley?
No.
Mylan? Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
That motion carries.
May I get a clarification on Mr. Haley's vote?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Are you voting no to not go into executive session? Are you voting no because you physically are not here and are unable to go to executive session?
I guess both. I was voting because I won't be able to participate in a very crucial matter of the board. And I think we have the electronic ability to have that participation to bifurcate that. And that I do recognize we need to move forward, but perhaps we can look toward how we can amend that if we are only electronically available, a board member, that that member might be able to still participate in crucial matters that are coming for executive sessions.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. We'll, we'll discuss that further.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll be here, just awaiting the return to see what action the board will further take or to adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're back in regular session. I guess the, the question to the board, do, do we need additional time this evening? For this evening's session? Or would you like to have a separate session that we can agree on a date for to continue the discussion after we gather some more data?
Well, this is Jeff with.
Well, I mean, Bob, you don't have to attend the meeting, but I mean, the rest of the board does want to meet.
Well, I think to narrow down, Bob, we've got too much here right now. We can't. We've got it. We've got to find like we did last year, three to five goals that are measurable and attainable and we need.
That's one thing.
Yeah.
That's it.
That's it.
So.
We're going to be for, that's all I'm trying to say. We have some, there may no difference, but we're going to be for
I could find time either Monday or Tuesday next week to meet.
I don't want to extend the session this evening.
No, I don't think we're going to accomplish anything.
I'm, I'm not gone until the fifteenth.
I would not have time until Saturday. Nope.
Let's just, let's just.
Sunday.
I believe we may have a multipurpose session for the next meeting, but we could talk about that. Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Your calendars for the next meeting. It's going to be on Wednesday. Yeah.
The nineteenth. That's okay.
Start early and late.
Okay, well, I, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
This is Jeff. Move to adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Groneman?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
Mylan? Mulvaney Henry?
Aye.
Bryant?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
That motion carries, meaning is adjourned.